It's change of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I made motion we approved last month's minutes.
All opposed?
Aye. Oh.
All good.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, new business. Now, we want to talk about the crack sealer?
Uh, there's a quote up there, and Steve had called Kyle. I know they're, he said they'd be willing to set up a demo that's free of charge. I just figured out at least see if it was in the budget before we even pursue it. But I think that'd be a lot more beneficial than putting in a bunch of cold patch up and down Main Street for coughing days.
See, we used to have a crack sealer, and the council then deemed that it's, you're supposed to have two people to operate it. So we didn't have enough manpower, so they sold it. So, there was a time we had a crack sealer. But that's when it got used, when John was still here. But, when he was gone and ones that followed him, and Ron was getting older and getting ready to retire. So they sold it.
Yeah.
At that hose bid auction that the town had several years ago.
I know for that one is pretty much, uh, you pay for a skid of like the rubber stuff. You get the machine for free for a week. So.
No, so this would be written and not actually buying one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I would be fine with doing it, but we gotta get the streets back into better condition as far as all the weeds, grass, cleaning and all that stuff before we do anything like a, that's my thoughts.
There's a lot along Main Street you can't even get to because people parking there.
During the day, if you go through there, the majority of the vehicles are gone.
Yeah.
You finish up one part and it's going to be time to start all over again. You're never gonna completely get rid of all of that.
Well, you'd have to pick a section that needs crack sealed the worst.
Right.
And get it all cleaned, because you can't crack seal it if there's weeds and grass growing in the cracks of the street.
Yeah.
And get it all cleaned and then schedule to rent it is the way you'd have to do it, or plan it out.
The middle is the worst part, really. The middle of Main Street is the worst part.
Yeah. And then Imel, which I didn't used to drabble those roads on that side of town before. But not my block, but coming from my house up display, that next block, there's, it looks like a sidewalk instead of a street. There's grass, cracks that go all the way across the street and there's grass growing all the way across. So, that would be something that I guess you would have to maybe discuss with David and figure out if you want to try and do a section this year before bad weather comes. And see if they can get a section cleaned and.
I think the hot weather is over and we can get back on.
So, you guys can powwow and decide what, what street or section you want to do work on first and after you get it cleaned and.
The demo was kinda supposed to show us how much a skid would do us.
Yeah, so you could go ahead and schedule a demo if you want to, Steve, with Kyle and.
We need, we need clean cracks first, then we can schedule what.
Or would they clean the spot that they're gonna demo, or does it have to be cleaned by us before they demo?
I mean, I can even in the morning figure all that out.
Find that out, and then you guys can talk and get the demo scheduled.
Well, Lehigh Coffin Days is coming up also.
Right.
I brought that up about three months ago.
We should probably get that sooner opposed to later.
I brought that up about three months ago and then.
Everything went sideways.
People start working on that and then they got deterred from doing something else, so. Wasn't much sense for me to even bring it up.
So what are we saying we're going to, wanna try the demo? And then, uh, give them a site and therefore rent it?
Let us get a couple places cleaned up and we'll see how much.
What they need for the demo. Cause the demo's free.
Yeah, I'll call Kyle tomorrow and I'll get more information out of him on that.
Okay.
Now, are we gonna have to, do we need to make a vote to rent?
Yeah.
No, you're gonna do the demo first and see how that goes, so then they can, if they want to talk about it next month about renting it, then, then you can make a motion to rent it after the demo.
Okay.
That's.
Unless, I mean.
Well, we're on a.
Unless somebody wants to make a provisional motion, like I motion to rip this crack sealer, providing the demo.
We're happy with the demo.
You're happy with the demo. You can make some kind of motion like that, so.
To buy a skid of that, we're looking at $3,000.
Well, we already have some, all that's a different.
Yeah, this is for the back sealer.
Different stuff.
So how's the budget feel about that?
Tight.
And that just from still.
I mean, that comes out of local broken streets, so.
Running the thing, the sealer, those actions for the.
You buy the crack sealer, they give you the sealer machine.
But that may only do twenty, or Main Street, or half of Main Street, they don't really know.
Yeah.
Right, so that's why with the demo, you need to find out how much that will do.
Yeah.
Cause we'd only be able to do the one of that, of that price this year. Cause that comes out of local broken streets. So, and now the other asphalt we bought this year is the, the stuff we got from last month, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's do a provisional vote then. If, if this is something everybody's in favor of, can we get a motion for that?
Can we afford it?
They said we could afford one this year, cause the only thing I've spent out of the asphalt and street signs is the street signs that we've ordered and that skid that we just got out of local broken streets.
I guess.
This isn't MBH, it's local broken streets. MBH is the one that I don't want to mess with unless I absolutely have to.
I think right now we probably ought to wait and we'll see how far we get along with patching.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's another.
Yeah, I agree.
Since it is as close to Lehigh Coffin Days as it is, patch what we need to patch for it and then you could still go ahead and, and have them do the demo and then that way we'd know next year if we want them to, if we want to go that route instead of buying more patch.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan to me.
All right, sounds good. All right, then let's move on. Um, live streaming the meetings, have we decided we're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that, I put that on there to officially take a vote and so you, so you can sign, you and Eric can sign the contract that I have.
Okay.
All you need, really need to do with that is ask for a motion to have WCTV.
Okay, can we get a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept based WCTV.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And let's talk about hiring a second employee. What does everybody think about this? What's your opinion?
I think it's too early to actually hire another full-time person.
Yeah.
However. We need to get our fiber out of way for our, our, our time people to kinda pick up the pace a bit.
Either that or allow me to work more hours.
Pardon me?
Either that or allow me to work more hours.
No. I think it's time, cause if we don't have a full-time guy doing it, then it's never gonna get completely taken care of.
Did, Sue, did you call the sheriff's department?
No. I did talk to Terrell a little bit, and he said the probation department also might have a program for the parolees that has to do community service. I didn't get a chance to call them either. I was gonna text you to see if you called before I called them, and I didn't get a deep chance to either.
I was at work when we were texting.
I've brought that up several times, that we used to use.
Yeah.
Ones that had to do community service all through the summer, and they clean the curbs and the gutters.
Yeah, who took care of getting in touch with them to set up dates?
John used to do it.
Well, I know David used to do it too.
Too, yeah.
So.
Cause Ron told him who he needed to contact, but it's kind of fell to the wayside since then.
Yeah, I think it's a good forum to keep.
I don't know the name of anybody that you'd need to contact, but whoever decide, I guess, would just call the probation department. David could probably even do it. Call the probation department and tell them who he is and that we're looking for some community service people to come and speak gutters and so on and so forth.
Sounds good. Any other input on that?
That's something we could just do, right?
Yeah.
But, in my, if you don't want to advertise, now that's up to y'all, but I would suggest using Facebook and not the pladium item. For one, Facebook's free. Pladium item ads for help are very expensive, and more people look at Facebook than they read the pladium item nowadays.
I agree.
Sorry, but.
I don't use Facebook anymore.
I had fifteen, twenty people messaging me about the job that wasn't even on.
The ones that we received that were not appealing at all.
That's a personal opinion.
Um, it's, it's come in and get our application only, or can they apply online?
I don't have anything, I don't have an online site for applications. I just have, they could email me a resume, that would be fine. And that they don't have to actually fill out the application that I have in my office. But not everybody has resumes, so some people prefer to come and get an application and fill it out. So, either or.
Okay, then moving on. Uh, we want to discuss the exhaust fan?
Uh, there's a, I got the third quote, it was from Carpenter Electric.
And it was, the quotes were 1775. But he just says install exhaust fan. Install switch indoor and labor. He does not say if this is copper wiring or aluminum, whether or not the chlorine will, if it's all stainless steel.
Did he take a look at it?
Mm-hmm.
Of the area, and that's why he, yeah.
Yeah, I told him it was, it's pretty much nothing but chlorine tanks in there, so.
Right, but I mean, he came out and took a look at it. He, and he assure you that by putting that one in there that it'll make it where IDM is happy?
I mean, they just pretty much said we just need an exhaust fan in there, so.
Yeah. Cause the other quotes that we had gotten was what, 14,000, and what was the other one?
I know Rob Jefferson's was up there. But you're never gonna run into an issue with Rob Jefferson doing the work, so he knows all you announce with IDM and everything.
Who's the lowest? I don't have any as a quote sign.
Yeah, who is lowest, or what is the cost of the lowest quotes?
Best one here for 1700.
Okay. 1775.
That's all I have. So that's the only quote I have, is just this one.
I think they actually were giving out at previous meetings, so you probably have in your paperwork.
All right.
Probably so.
Is this something we want to vote on then, at this point?
Are you, do you need him to get more clarification on that lowest quote before we go with it?
I would.
I would too, just to make sure that everything's compliant with IDM. Yeah, I'm hard on that side of it, so table it till next month. Sounds good.
Okay.
Table that. Um, moving on to department reports.
If everything's good, you can just say everything's good if you need to discuss something then.
Right. Is everybody good with the, any, anything you want to report?
Got one question. A tree is dying next to the Fountain City brick sign in the park. Do you want Jeff and I to take that down?
Why do we want to take it down, or both of them? Well, it looked kinda goofy with one on the right, nothing on the right, and one on the left.
Now, we're, we're talking about big.
Yes, yeah, big tall ones.
Yeah, two on each side of it.
Can we just trim off the dead part of it and see?
It's all dead.
The whole thing browned out.
Whole thing's dead.
It started out like one day, like just the top triangle was brown, and I came back the next day and really the whole thing was brown.
And I spoke to someone that does landscaping, and he said to buy another tree that size is very expensive. He recommended that we just take them both down, start over, or don't put anything there.
Yeah, I recommended just go ahead and take them both down and then maybe next year in the spring, talk about getting, you know, something to replace them, but obviously smaller.
You could even get, um, two of those li- little lilac trees that's by the front door out here. You could get two of those and plant one on each side, cause they don't get bit.
I'd say we're.
And they bloom flowers.
It might be expensive to try to save the one and replant it somewhere.
Yeah, so you need a motion to take both of them down.
Yeah, I make a motion that we take both of those out.
I'll second it.
If we, if we do take both of them, since all that's on this side of that rope, are we allowed to spray in the rock right there, or is that still?
No.
From what Ron said when I was, when me and him was talking about it, the thing inside of the cable, right there at 27, you can't spray past that. On 27 side of the cable, that's 27, that's N dot. It's not actually the park. But that cable that goes around the park, can't spray inside there.
So we can't spray them on the N dot side?
No, on the, our side. The N dot side is, is the street right away, and that's 27, that's N dot.
So can I.
Where that Fountain City sign is, if we pull them trees out, it's really just rock in there. Would we be allowed to spray at that point? That's what I was meaning.
I wouldn't even want to pull them out without a locate, cause you don't know where the roots are going.
Yeah.
So, you got a, a motion and a second, so now you just gotta call for all in favor.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Uh, Terrell, is there anything you wanted to add?
Nope.
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Uh, we can move on to the visitors' forum.
Oh, wait a minute, we, um, you have, David, something about this Ohio Valley gas, the potential North Street issue.
Um, yeah, so I've had, I'm still working on finishing them, I got a lot of 811 tickets. OVG's retiring a lot of their old gas lines, and I seen, I had two for, that was on North Street. So I called just to get verification from the number that was on the ticket and asked them exactly how they were retiring the lines. Well, they're, you got the little arm that comes up right outside the house. They're cutting that out, cutting it down so far in the ground, they'll foam it all up. And then they go to the main, and they cut it off at the main, and then they patch whatever they gotta do there. Well, the main runs out into North Street, so they would have to dig on North Street in order to cap it at the main.
And they would have to fix it back exactly like it is.
Yeah. Which, I, I was gonna try to call somebody from OVG tomorrow, see if there's any way they can come in from the side without actually cutting the road, but.
No, they don't want to get under their work, they, they need an open pit.
Yep.
Which is gonna mess up our paving project that we just spent.
Well, OVG, Ohio Valley Gas will have to put it back right exactly like it is right now.
Yeah.
Where, where's this gas line at on North Street?
Um.
This side?
Well, there's a line, they had it marked going straight across, probably three quarters of the way down to the lift station. I can, I can get the exact address of the line, but you go down it, you'll see the yellow.
Side of 27.
Yeah, you'll see the yellow mark in the down the road.
Cause there will be digging up Imel Street too. There's a.
Yeah, I got like.
Paint that goes straight across the street in front of my house.
There's like 21 lines, including one back here at shop, so.
So is that what that is on Hartley Street then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But it's just like when we did the water project and the sewer project, we had to put yards and stuff back like they were before we messed them up, so they'll have to do the same thing.
Okay, any more? Anything else on the departments? No, okay. All right, now, visitors' forum.
Mr. Webster.
I sent all of the town board members a link to a seminar coming up this Thursday. Just wanted to get an update on who, who can attend, Michael Gray? Anyone else? I, I ended up Facebook messaging. Um, it's, I'll be honest with you, I think everybody needs to attend that. Sitting here, I hear a lot of things that we want to do, that we can't seem to afford to do, and that's status quo now. State government has changed how it's funding counties, cities, towns. I really would encourage my elected leaders to be proactive and go to that meeting and talk about, and get information about how our revenue streams to Fountain City are gonna change. And how, maybe it's time to ask for a little more money. I hate taxes as much as anybody, but I also like services. I like streets, I like sidewalks. I would really like to see everybody there Thursday night, and if, if not, personally and as a citizen, I'd like to know why you can't be there, or you're not willing to be there.
Do we have to register, do we have to register for that?
There's a link, yes. If you showed up, I'll bet they would let you in. Now, I hate to sound confrontational or standoffish, but, um, I feel very strongly about this. You're our leaders. I appreciate Mike stepping up to say you'll be there, but you all need to be there, and you all need to discuss this going forward.
Six?
6:30.
Yeah.
At the Coleman Center. August 7th.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
It's at the Coleman Center?
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, anything?
I was gonna say something.
Yes, sir.
And we defended a lot next door where they took the trees out. They didn't do a real good job of taking care of the stumps and with comfort confidence. Coughing days coming up. You're gonna have people driving and parking and kids running around, it could get hurt. I mean, it's kind of, not a big deal, it's only happened that much.
The three trees that we had taken out back there, over here.
But yeah, they.
Three.
Don't want them.
They want it taken off right here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it was an accident. I'd probably say they need to reach out to three amigos.
That's not, David will, can take a look and he has the contact for them people.
Yeah.
Lori, I just sent you a text with that link again.
Okay. Anybody else?
Did you hear it? Keith just sent you a link to that thing again.
Okay. Okay.
I do, I have something that under the visitors' forum.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, the gentleman that bought Paul and Sandy Ewing's place, I don't know.
Jesse Poole.
Huh?
Jesse Poole.
Okay, I knew it was Jesse, but I didn't know he was last name. Uh, he stopped me, um, a couple of weeks ago, was asking, who actually owned the ditch? And I told him as far as I knew, um, that ditch actually is on his property, because the gate, it goes straight across, okay? And the ditch is on the south side of that gate. Um, so technically it is on his property. He is wanting to cut down some of the trees that would be on like the south side of the ditch. He's not gonna, he don't want to take them all down, but he wants wood, wants some wood. Um, so he wants to kind of thin that out a little bit. Um, I, you know, my opinion was to have at it, you know? Um, anything that he can, you know, is willing to take down on his own, it is his property to go for it. Um, the other thing, um, he is wanting to put a pond in his backyard, which I told him he would have to get a land permit to be able to do that. He's gonna dig it and do all of that himself, cause that's what he does, or we're just.
Do we have any ordinances regarding something like that?
We have right of ways around the well, wellheads back there.
On Paul Ewing's own property?
Yeah.
Well, that's what the land use permit would be for, to make sure that wherever he's gonna put it is not interfering with anything like that.
Yeah.
But mine was an ordinance as far as having a body of water like that, not like a pool or whatever.
I can look into, I'll bear many.
Yeah, I'm not either. So, that would be, the land use permit that he has to fill out and get approved, that wherever he's wanting to put it, that's when they would come, and of course he'd have to call a 1-1 dig.
Right.
And then David would check our stuff to make sure there's no wellheads or any kind of water sewer thing.
Well, he would have to stay back from the wellheads.
Right.
Yeah, even if they're on our property.
I don't think it's gonna be anything like monstrous or anything, but he said he's got, he's got the property he wants.
To do something with it.
To utilize it.
Yeah.
And then the trees along the property line up the town and his property, I'm sure nobody has any problems with him thinning that out. The other property lines, he would have to make sure the other property owners wouldn't have a problem.
Okay.
Bring it down.
There's no other property.
There's a tree line that goes all the way from north to south.
Well, he's, I, he's not talking about the back. He's not talking about in the back, he's just talking about here in the side.
Right. And that's why I was saying.
I don't know that he's even gonna go back to even as far as the road track.
Where his fences.
Because he said, he, he still wants to have privacy.
Right, right.
But he does want to kind of thin that out a little bit and, um, utilize the wood for whatever.
They have fire pit, I'm sure, I've seen them.
Which, you know, I thought would benefit us.
Yeah, it would.
For not, so that our employees don't have to do that.
Be less limbs that you have to clean up when the wind blows.
Most of that stuff in there is dying anyways.
Yeah.
The only thing, being in town, he would probably have to put a fence around it.
The pond.
Mm-hmm. Keep kids out of it.
Cause that'd be something you.
That's something that would be an attorney question too.
That would have to be something he'd have to check with the insurance, would probably have to check with the lawyer. That would have to be something he'd have to check with the insurance. We'd probably have to check with the lawyer team.
The attorney, yeah.
Yeah.
Which we don't have anybody here to talk about that other, that I wanted to know about, the new ordinance on the signs, signage.
Well, we could take that step after he gets the land use permit approved. Then we could make sure legally what he has to do on top of that. Makes sense?
Yes.
Well, I told him when the meeting was, but he still work, he works at Newport Way and still, right? Jesse?
Nope, he works in Richmond.
Are you working in Richmond now?
Yeah, but he had stuff at school tonight. I went over and told him about it, but I don't worry about it.
But he did what, you know, he did ask me when the meetings were, so that he...
I went and told Nicky tonight.
And I just told him I didn't, you know, bring it up in case he wasn't here. I said, I, I don't know of any issues that we should have, except, you know, no, I didn't. I thought about the fence, but I didn't talk about the fence, but, um...
Yeah, that'd be his first, he can do the trees and then his first step on the pond would be to come get a land use permit and get it filled out and pay the fee and then David will have to...
Yeah, he'll have to get with IDM as far as the wellheads.
Yeah, the eight-one-one dig and, and then after everything's copastatic, then we can find out if he needs a fence or whatever.
Yeah, there was a map up in the office.
Yeah, they took them, Chase took them all down and took them back there.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll let him know.
Okay, anything else? Of the visitor forum? No? Okay, moving on. Can we get an approval of claims and payments? Make a motion for approval of claims and payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.